Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, May 9th. And thank you, everybody, for being here. Let the record show that councilors are all here. Thank you very much, folks. We have minutes in front of us, and do they meet with everybody's approval?
Yes.
Is that a motion? Yes, with a motion.
Yes.
Can I have a second? Motion second. Home favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Under visitor and public comments, we're going to have a couple of things before we open it up to the general public. First of all, I have a group of Cub Scouts that have something they'd like to tell us. And... Hi, guys. Welcome. There's a place you can talk. There we go. Go ahead and move the microphone down. We need to have that done.
So we just wanted to say thank you for letting us come. This is the Monmouth Independence PAC 38 Tigers and Bakers... Sorry, Wolves. Wolves. And we've got four Cub Scouts here to tell you about something we have going on as our community service project. So Josh, can you please tell everyone what we are doing as our community service project this year?
We're gonna be building a my little library.
That's right. And can you tell me why are we building a my little library?
No.
You just moved in.
No.
Is it because, let's see, do people need to read books during the summer?
Yes.
Is reading a very special thing part?
Yes.
And why are we building a little library, Lockland?
Um, so that, um, the my little library can teach kids about stuff they don't know. Or like, maybe, um, they like, um, know something, they can like, probably book from my little library, and they can read it wherever they want. They can bring it wherever.
That's right. So we are inviting you to our ribbon cutting on June 2nd at 5:00. We would like to invite all of you to come and join in on the festivities. And then Mrs. Swanson can tell us where we're building the my little library.
It's at the Mount Fur Inspiration Gardens, the children's garden there.
Great.
Thank you.
Let's give them a big round of applause. And they're free, because I know that they probably are gonna get, have to get ready for school tomorrow, so they're welcome to take their leave at their convenience. Now, next, we have a short presentation that I'm gonna make, that... Tonight, I want to give a special welcome and thank you to a member of the community. Ani and her family, would you please stand up? Ani Kokhitezi has been an exchange student at Central High School. She's part of the Future Leaders Exchange Program, is here from the country of Georgia. Or as she would say, "The country of Georgia, not the state." The mission of this exchange program is to share her home culture, country's culture, and to get to know other countries so she can become a future leader. Ani's been a wonderful ambassador, giving presentations at Central High School, as well as local organizations. So, I'd like to say thank you, Ani, for sharing your culture with us. And from all of us independents, it's been wonderful to get to know you. I also want to thank your host family, Jeffrey, Joanne, and Autumn Clinton. And Ani is going back to Georgia tomorrow morning very early, and it'll take her two days to get here. And we will hope that she will come back and see us. And in recognition of her time here, I'm proud to, on behalf of the City of Independence, present each of you with a historic Independence pin, so you can have it on behalf of the city. And everybody's, and we're gonna do a picture. Let's give her a big welcome. Round of applause. Come over this way. In the back. There you go. Okay, so, oh, if you want to take a picture, come on over to the middle. We have a moment. Let's just do this right. And we hope you'll come back. See? We just did economic development. Okay. Thanks for doing good looking for us. Now, are there other people who want to speak under public comment, not related to the public hearing that we're coming up on later? Okay, I don't see anybody hustling to the microphone, and so we will continue to move forward. Council members, in your packet, you have appointments to Western Days and to the library. Oops, excuse me there. Page 13. And this has been recommended by staff, and I'll, and I forward this to your...
Do you have any problem with doing it two for one?
Let's do it all once.
I move to appoint, is it Rhys Acklin?
It's Reece Acklin.
Reece Acklin?
Reece, yes.
Reece Acklin to position two of the Western Days Commission, and it looks like she's going to be treasurer, which is a thankless job. And also Leslie Howerton to position three of the library ward.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Thank you for your willingness to serve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. On, next on your item, I do have, it's City Recorders and Municipal Clerks Week, and I have issued a proclamation, which you see there, because we know most of all, take care of your city recorder, because otherwise, they can make you look bad in the minutes. Thank you. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, taking short time for your reporter.
Mayor, mayor councilors, thank you. Little apologies in advance, it's a little bit longer report, I ended up on a bit. So one thing, I did tell you that I was gonna report back to you, and I'll do that right now. The development agreement they have with Independence Land, they call it for the issuance of a joint use agreement for the use of our event center operations downstairs. We have, and I talked to, I think pretty much told the individually about that, and while I think there is a full agreement with the approach that we were going to take with the event center, we are withdrawing that and have completed an amendment to the contract, withdrawing that provision from the development agreement. That, I think, will be instead assigned, or will be done with the ultimate hotel operator, where it makes more sense. So that is a separate item, it won't be, it's no longer making its way into the joint use of the development agreement, and it will come back in the future with the hotel operator, pretty much along the same lines. So just leaving that standing for that's fine. A few things, and as you know, I query staff in advance, right, if they would like to report on, so rather than that, every staff member come up here, and sort of summarize things that are going on. So, CrossFit Kiowa is, is doing a couple of things, they're doing a downtown fundraiser on Memorial Day, we think they'll be, I haven't had the latest of this, but we think they'll be closing on C Street to do that. In the meantime, they're also planning moves of Robert Boyd's building for an expanded space there, on Striker Road, so that's a little bigger space, triple the space with higher ceilings, that's good for them and good for us to have that kind of successful operation. You'll note that our economic director is not here tonight, he's at the Governor's Tourism Conference this week in Salem. We had a group from the tourism group that actually did a paddle from Independence to Salem to celebrate the conference, and that will be turned into a video that Travel Salem will be promoting, you know, of that paddle from Independence to Salem, so that'll be a little fun there. May 18th, many of you may have received an invite on this, it is a fly-in event that we're putting on, and essentially, it is a demonstration of drones and how they are applied to smart agriculture. It'll be done at the Oak Grove Road School property, and there'll be a bus stop a kid out ahead of time to get up close and learn about drones. So that's, again, continuing interest with our economic development activities that we're doing. If you have no reason to look for it, rain again, there'll be one. Downtown, we will have a rainworks display, so if you go down there downtown the next time for ratings, you'll see what pops up in the rain, and I'm just looking for you to make that investigation on your own. So, could be kind of fun, we'll do works. A little mystery. More along the line of high-tech work that we're doing, and is, we have managed successfully linked Intel to OSU to test a new pest sensor. Pest Sensor, it's one of those internet thing devices, and some of the researchers are here, this week talking to people about broadband access. A National Foundation Group Fund through Harvard is going to feature the school-based health relief intel and dentistry program in a video advocating for rural broadband access. So again, these are ways to build on the might of resource and the fiber resource that we have here, so that's one of the things that, that's why we're pointing to these kinds of things, to support our broker through our, through our activities in economic development and the fiber community we have. A little more, a little more break in order, a little more down to earth, Main Street Ida has received a Main Street revitalization grant that we're partnering with them to do, and that's helped finish redevelopment of what had been the Area 51 group hub, it'll be something different now, or you'll...
Yoplait.
Hmm?
Yoplait.
Yoplait, thank you very, thank you very much. That work should be starting soon, and that is, I believe, is $400,000, so that, that is a significant project and redevelopment opportunity for that building, so we're pleased to look at that for it. We did a soft opening on Indy Commons for what we're calling our city sidewalk office. We will be putting up some sideage and a few things out there, and just filling some space here and there, over there, just to allow, you know, again, access for the public to, to staff outside of City Hall, in perhaps more relaxed environments, a little different environment. And so I've already, I've already spent a little time there, it's kind of a kneel space, so I think that, I'm hoping that'll be a successful opportunity, it's pretty inexpensive, so, just another way to, another way to engage the public. Tallgrass Compliance is off and running, it's gonna be running through our code enforcement this year, and we're trying to get people to use it and work more to help with the reporting. We think we'll have a little more success with that problem this year, a little more, a little more focus enforcement than we've been able to generate in the past. So that, I think, will be a huge plus. Today, we had our branding event, we, after you saw the branding presentation, we did the same thing with our target group, I think everybody that showed up was, I think we're all of ignorance on what is the best package there, so I think that's the direction we're moving forward, so we're hoping to get to guess fairly quickly on what a full brand package would look like, get that launched, start working on the products that we will be, you know, not least, which will be sideage, marketing materials, changes to our website alike, to, we're looking at our vehicles, see if we can be able to allow the, the marks, the branding marks that we can use on our vehicles, on our produce cars, but first of all, the other vehicles. Just sort of bring in, yeah, sort of a new consistent view, and I think that's a really good looking one. I think that everybody knows, we completed the budget fairly promptly in two meetings, and always a good job, congratulations. Again, it's your work, the citizens' work, in getting that done, that'll be to you as a council at your first regular meeting in June, so that'll be a fraction of that point for final adoption. So again, the budget officer presents it, the budget committee approves it, the council adopts it, so that's what you'll be doing in June. If you haven't paid much attention to our social media, we are continuing to enhance our offerings. I have learned how now to get on the Twitter account, so, you know, if you have a Twitter feed, you could expect some things from me as well as others. I'll keep it in good taste. I think we have, you know, we're just trying to be more robust, more transparent as we can be. You know that we're working on the dashboard for the financial presentation on the websites, there's a lot of things that we're trying to do to make sure that people can learn, whatever that is, they possibly want to learn about what the city is doing, and so that's, that is our goal, so we're working hard towards that. These street condos, they're a little slow, but they're off, we expect to see building plans in about a month or so, they had to go through an engineering change, but we fully expect they will continue on. There is a, we have the application meeting on a new five duplex developer proposal, which will be located behind the proposed Dollar General, which is also ready to get off and running, they're 9,000 square foot store, so that should be underway, construction should start at the end of June or March. So both the condominium, the duplex, the Pope Department's duplex units, and Dollar General are located in the same area, Dollar General will start in advance of the duplex, but that's off and running as well. Quail Crossing subdivision on North Congress Road is already under, is already starting construction, so if you're out there, you'll see what's going on there. We've been busy building an extension of the Riverfront Concrete Walkway, so if you go down to the Dog Park, you'll see where we are continuing north, about, I believe, 1200 or 1400 feet, is that correct? So, roughly, about halfway to the end of that last segment between the Dog Park and the Yoplait. So, one, get this beast done, one left, one left to go. We'll also be working this summer on designing work for, or very shortly, get off the work for designing line, the park improvements on Sunset Park, which is Sunset Meadows subdivision, the reserve order that goes through that, continuation of Mount Fur Trail from, from the Inspiration Garden. We were hoping to do some paving, trail marking in Inspiration Garden, as far as the budget will take us, get some trail work done in there, take some of that gravel road and make it into a more ADA accessible pathway. We're doing some further park planning on Dog Park, and finally, on the Riverfront Property itself. And then we have a large planning project, budget for next year as well, on the continuation of Riverfront Park. So a lot of park planning, and hopefully, we'll be in for a grand presentation, June 1st or June 2nd, to the application that you approved for roughly a half million dollars, will be in front of the parks, state parks board, to pitch our case there, we hope to get approval on that and get started with construction as well. So that's moving on. We had questions on the marijuana business license, where are we on that, just for you to know, we have completed the application form, we have notified all the businesses that we aren't aware of, that are in operation or considering operations, that's the three of them at this point. They've all received an application package, and they have until May 15th, a few days, to complete that supplemental. So we're expecting that shortly, we are having a follow-on meeting with internally the staff, to look at next steps in the enforcement of that business license ordinance that you adopted.
Now, the three you talked about, are those retail or commercial?
Those are all retailing, but whether, this applies to all business operations, but right now, all we have are, is two retail, and one sort of a mix of uses. So those are the ones that we're looking at at this point. The one on Striker Road is not at that point yet. A couple more announcements, now wraps us up. Mark your calendars for the main update on May 20th, Saturday is 20th. I believe that's 9:01, is that correct? 2:00. 2:02. We would love to have more volunteers, we certainly want your garbage, but we, anything you can do to go in down and join the fun, and join the work crew would be great, help with all sorts of things that we can, have turnover to you plan out, so please help us. Also, we have a National Seriuses, National Seriuses Foundation ride, that's the first of that, that's coming up on May 18th, there's more information on that coming up later in this agenda, with respect to the permitting, so, that's what I have for the moment. Questions on my report at this point?
I have a question, just from like, the ballpark, about how many building lots do you see being freed up over the next six months? By that, I mean, we have submissions, but they were tied up with government work or approvals and that kind of stuff. But I know there's at least, what, three subdivisions that are...
In six months, in six months, I would guess that Quail Crossing would be completed and approved, that's 36 lots, no more than that.
So the ones out south, will be ready to do the next construction?
I don't, I don't believe so, but they either governing. That, that could change.
I have a couple of questions, please. I wanted to follow up on one thing you mentioned, Indy Works a few minutes ago.
Yes.
And when we were at the high school for the meeting there, the second meeting in April, a couple of the students were asking for an app by which they could find out what was going on in the city, and you had suggested applying Indy Works to that, is that in process?
We have, I have a list of things that we're gonna sit down and go over from that meeting, we have a, we have a joint, we have a follow-on meeting to the strategic plan, as well as to cover those items from the, from the school meeting next Wednesday, during our normal staff meeting, we're just switching over, we're actually gonna be over into Commons down the office and focus discussion on that.
And the second thing I just wanted to add to your comment about Cleanup Day, that Imani Hall, the rare student, has been working for the city and also the Independence Downtown Association, has organized a flower fundraiser for that day, where you can come down, we'll give you the, we'll provide the dirt, the seedlings, and the flowerpots, and you pick out your, your combination and your order, and you build your own little flowerpots, and it will be reasonably priced, and it's a fundraiser.
Mine's a rare find. Thank you, Mr. Klein, appreciate it. Mr. Danko, I think you have some, thank you. I know there were some questions that council, a couple council members had, I think, Mr. Danko, on something related to marijuana, I think, Council Day, I think you had a couple questions that you might ask.
My, my question dealt with the explanation, what I read in the proposal and the agenda that I got, wasn't the same thing I heard from the tape of the planning meeting, but I think that's been corrected.
It has, and that presentation's come with the public hearing. Right. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that you'd asked, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, given that with respect. We're gonna move on to the Western Days update. Janice Thompson. Good evening.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity, it's been a while since I've been here, so I'm gonna try to keep it short, but we have a, kind of a lot of things going on, I want you guys to know about. First off, just to let you guys know, I know you guys had an update after our last meeting or after our last event, but I was able to make it more of that, so I want to share with you guys that here, we continue to grow bigger and bigger, which is great for us. Last year, we had a record break in here, over 25,000 people, just on the fourth alone. Some of that was due to the influx of meat soft in Salem. At last minute, they decided to up their prices to $5 a person, and so, we got a lot of crowd from them, so we thank them, that worked out great for us. Couple of things that I want to talk about tonight, two things in particular, is what we have going on right now, and the works for our event coming up, and then what we are focusing on in the long run, which basically revolves around finances, hopefully gets down to the bottom of everything. And so, for the last few years, as a commission, we have come together and tried to put a vision on Western Days, and where it's going, and where we want it to go, and what we want to see. And part of that, and part of figuring that out, we had to do a lot of research to figure out, we had a bunch of little pieces about the history of Western Days and the Fourth of July celebration here, but we never had a concrete piece of where it came from, when it originated and stuff. Shocker, buying along with some help from the museum, I was able to get some really awesome history that I shared with our commission, and I won't bore you with it, but it was really cool, but it's a long story. We found out that the very first official Fourth of July celebration for the City of Independence started in 1903. So it's been around for a while, so we're gonna start looking at numbers and anniversaries coming up. That wasn't the official Western Days, but it was the official first Fourth of July celebration here. We also learned through this research that Western Days was actually, the name came to be because of Western Oregon University. A lot of us had it in our thoughts, I mean, we were just kind of a Western talent at times, and that's where our heads lie, so this, this research has been really cool to look into. Since we separated from Monmouth, which is where Western Oregon University is, we've kind of headed in a new direction, I wouldn't say new direction, but we kind of took a step back and thought about why, why do we have this event? And obviously, it's to celebrate our independence. So as we look forward, we are gonna start branding our event as a more patriotic event. We're gonna start seeing some new things that really tie into our history, and why we're out here to celebrate and have a good time. So to do that, really excited about this, so I'm probably gonna get a few sponsors talking to, I know I did at our last meeting. One of the biggest changes that we're gonna add this year, and I hope everybody has an opportunity to come on and watch it and see it, I got together with Mr. Witt from Central High School, and gave him free rein to take the stage for an hour to officially kick off on the fourth. Unfortunately, already that this year ends on the fourth, so it would be nice to kick off in this fashion, but we're gonna do it on the fourth, just as our official kickoff to the day. And they're gonna take the stage for one hour, and they are gonna put on a presentation of kids that are gonna be dressed in time period garb, and they're gonna kick off with reading the Declaration of Independence, followed by a performance from the Jazz Choir, to have some patriotic songs for us and stuff, so, we're really excited to, to have that this year. And then looking forward, because he's as excited about it as we are, looking forward, we are looking to expand that to throughout the event, having some historical figures present at the event. The students will do some research on historical figures such as Lexie Ross, find out, you know, all the intimate details they can about her, and the things that she did, and the way that she impacted our country, and just kind of mingle during the event, dressed up, and talk to the people and engage the crowd, and give them a little bit of history and share their knowledge that they've been able to find out about whatever historical figure they're gonna be representing. So hopefully, we're gonna be seeing that next year, it's a little late to get that in this year, but I'm happy just to add what we have added. As well as, we are bringing back, I'm not sure where this kind of got dropped, but we haven't had the National Anthem there for quite a few years. So we have the local singer, local performer, Terry Barry out of Monmouth, who is going to be taken the stage directly before the firework show, and just as she finishes the National Anthem, this one, our first, our first shot's gonna blow up, so that'll be fun and exciting. We have added, I challenge our commission to come up with a new event each year, to try to bring new life to the event, change things up, just offer new, new experiences for everybody. And this year, we overachieved, and we're gonna be bringing in two new events, we are gonna be having a talent show, it's called the Talent Quest, on Sunday, and we are looking for talent, both Monmouth, Independence, surrounding areas, any type, any age, am we appropriate, of course. And I was fortunate enough to have, I know a lot of you know him, that Albania is gonna be heading at it for me, and he has been actively working on it, well, he juggles all of his wrestling, so I'm very thankful to have pulled him in, we could not do this without the help that we get from everybody. Our big thing with that is the grand prize winner, I'm not sure if it's good for them or not, I would give it a risk, right? They are going to take the stage for one hour on the Fourth of July, be the opening act for our headline at that night at Cloverdale, so that'll be a big opportunity for them to get out there in front of tens of thousands of people, and show off their talent, whatever it may be. We were able to put up some online applications on there, so it's nice to see people just scale the website, and I'm already getting some responses for people signing up, because it's always a fear, your first event, you just don't know how it's gonna go over. Our next opportunity is actually gonna be a fundraiser opportunity, so, a lot of people are unaware of the fact that part of our goal is to offer our community ways for organizations to help out and earn some money for their organizations. For instance, the Central High School comes in and they run our gates for us, they collect the dollar at the gate, and 20% of all of our girls' gate funds goes right to the Central High School all-night party, or trip, whatever they're gonna be doing. So it's a great way for us to get them involved, get them some, you know, community service going, as well as being able to, to help fund a nice, safe, secure, fun event for them. We also partner with the Central High School Girls Basketball Team, they run a parking lot for us, and all they do is, they, they give us a small stipend of what they bring in, just to cover the gaps for the lights that we have down there, and they have successfully run that parking lot for quite a few years, and they benefit well from it. This year, Central Youth Force, their softball organization reached out to us, and they are in desperate need of some equipment and some field maintenance upgrades that they just don't have the funding for. And at the time, we were talking about... for. And at the time, we were talking about one of our new events that we're gonna bring in is an all-time Western photo booth, that's gonna, we have that organization that's gonna come in. They set it up, they run it, they do everything we need them to do except for selling tickets for the photos. So we worked out an opportunity for the CYS Girls Softball Program, they're gonna come and they're gonna sell the tickets for the photos, man that whole thing so we don't have to touch it, and they'll take away 20% of their drug sales, they'll market it, they'll push it, they'll man it, we don't have to do anything, which will get us great, takes out all of our backs. And we project, based on what the company has done in the past with our numbers, they project that the softball team will benefit roughly eight hundred to a thousand dollars that day. So that's awesome. And then the remaining funds will pay for the booth for the future years so that we can keep it there and it doesn't come out of our pocket anywhere. So that is all we have for new and upcoming things, so which leads us to our last part, which is our gate entrance fee. For years, we have squabbled about, do we raise it, do we keep it the same, where do we raise it? It's only a dollar, it's only a dollar to get in. So to ask to raise it to two dollars, that's a significant jump, and people get angry at the gates just at a dollar. But I don't have to deal with quarters either. So we decided that due to needs of our growing event, specifically security needs, fireworks needs, and entertainment needs, that we've reached that point where it is time to raise those fees. But we struggled with how to integrate the community with this decision. Like I said, I don't know if, maybe you guys have been up at the gates at the time, but people get very angry having to pay a dollar to come in for this amazing show. So we decided that for our first year out, we would like to just charge the additional dollar on the Fourth of July. That preserves our hometown day, our Monday fireworks that, that we put on specifically for our community, so they don't have to deal with the traffic of the fourth. We're gonna hold that to the dollar just to honor our community this year. As well as our wristbands that we started pre-selling for a speed of fifty cents to the park, we're gonna keep that at the dollar, and those are all pre-sold up until the parade time. After the parade is over, the wristbands no longer are being sold, and it'll be two dollars at the gate after that. So I'm hoping that will soften the blow, at least for our community, they have the opportunity to still take advantage of that dollar. And like I said, that's gonna impact, on a conservative side, based on our numbers in the past, we're anticipating, on a conservative side, about eleven thousand dollar increase in our revenue for that, for, for this upcoming event. What we pull off for the small budget that we have is amazing, and we would definitely like to see some improvements. It's hard to generate new activities without generating new funding to pay for those, as well as it's hard to maintain a secure environment without, you know, we wouldn't make this happen without the help of Independence Police Department and the agencies that they partner with. So out of that eleven thousand dollars, we've kind of sketched out a new budget that Risa and I are gonna sit down with Gloria with, and get her thoughts on where we would like to shuffle that money to. And that money will, the majority of it will be shuffled in three areas, it'll be shuffled in security, fireworks, and entertainment. Entertainment being our smallest shuffle, Alex has done a tremendous job of bringing us great entertainment for low, low cost. We get some amazing bands that they give us a really good discount on. He doesn't need much, but a little, a little bit will help him out, to be able to afford us entertainment on every night instead of just the nights we have fireworks. Our second significant increase will be, like I said, for fireworks. We've had the same budget for, I, I can't even tell you how many years we have had the same amount. So as a result, every year, our fireworks showed dwindles. And Aaron was able to capture some pictures, and he took me down to the trailer this last year, and he showed me that we had over 200 tubes that we can't use anymore because we can't fill with the amount that we have. So we're proposing that we budget instead of twenty thousand, we're gonna budget twenty, about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand for that, which will be a significant bump and bring our show back up to the quality and the caliber that it should be, that it has been in the past. And last, the, the last biggest impact that we're really focusing on is our security needs. Quite a few years ago, Chief Nansen and I encountered a pavement with local agencies and groups looking for volunteer, volunteer efforts to help alleviate some of the, the overtime and some of the pressure on the police department here. We were able to secure some volunteer work from search and rescue, which has been tremendous help. It, it freed up a lot of time, especially around the parade route, but obviously not enough to, to compensate or cover or, you know, help out in, in, in the capacity that we need to. Throughout the past year, I have had the opportunity to make some contacts with other agencies, such as Deputy Harlow with the envelope Sheriff's Department, they have a great cadet program. And working with Sergeant Benuelos, he's been reaching out to other agencies. And what we're proposing is not only bumping up the amount that we put into security so that we can alleviate some of the costs that the city has to cover there, we're gonna be utilizing private security to subsidize a lot of the security, as well as utilizing cadet programs. It gives them a great opportunity to come out and work in the capacity that they're qualified for, as well as it is a significant cost savings for us. So we're really, really looking forward to giving them that opportunity and hopefully seeing that bottom line for security really drop.
Well, we really appreciate you and all the volunteers as a former chair of Western Days and moved a few barrels of garbage over, I think everybody on the council has had a unique opportunity. So thank you so much for giving us a report tonight. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and all the energy, because I know it takes, it's a lot more than just the Fourth of July. So thank you very much for, for doing that, and I look forward to fireworks.
I, I do have one uncomfortable question.
Oh, boy, that's what I'm here for.
Is there any possibility that the name can get changed from Western Days?
So as you know, we did that in the past.
I know. You don't have to answer me now, just.
No, it's, it's something that we've talked about.
If you had asked, I was going to.
And I mean, to be honest with you, if we moved to do that again, which we did in the past, and it just did not go over well, we're in the middle of rebranding, so that's something for us to talk about. And that would be the time, as we start promoting, I am not a social media person at all, and I've had to kind of get familiar with Facebook as far as, you know, boosting our page so that people know what's going on, know what that is now. But now would be the time for us to revisit it. I can tell you that discussions we've had in the past have not gone over well, just because we did make that change. I mean, it's not, well, I, I don't know why it wasn't well received, I wasn't there at the time, but.
Well, wasn't well received by who, the committee?
No.
Or by the people showing up?
People showing up, they thought our event was canceled.
Yeah, I just think it might be interesting, I've timed it, the city is rebranding as well, to sort of tie that in with, with that larger picture.
So I'm gonna suggest that, I'm sure both of these council members and almost anybody else up here would be happy to sit down with you over a cup of coffee and have a visit. Is that a good idea?
Yeah, it's super good.
I'm gonna catch up anyway.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks, thanks so much for being there.
Good job.
Thank you. We're gonna move, we have a liquor license, we have a alcohol in the park, Mr. Headland, do you deserve a minute?
Either way.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. You guys have packed it, you'll have a memo from me related to applications from Grove and from Airlink for serving alcohol in the park for the National Solarmisus Foundation fundraiser. This is their first year for this, they're anticipating about a hundred and fifty people or so. They're hoping to continue this as an annual event, increase the number of people to show up and, and so.
Yes, go ahead.
As soon as I saw the liquor in the line, I wondered, is it a closed event or can anybody go to? I'll pay too, but.
Yeah, my understanding is that they have reserved the park for their event, but they're, it's a fundraiser, so the tickets are going to be sold for food and for beverages, so obviously would just increase their, their fundraising efforts if people show up, so. Was there any other questions?
Additional questions, you'll, for the audience to know, we have an extensive staff memo including a, a map and application in here, and it's pretty straightforward, these are people, the Grove and.
Yes, great history, is there any issues with any of these people?
Right.
They have a good security plan, single entrance exit, no monitors inside.
I did have one quick question.
Please do.
Because I did it for Hop and Heritage, because the bed mentions that there will be monitors checking IDs.
Yes.
I did it for Hop and Heritage, we all had to be OLCC cardholders, go to that position. Will that also hold true for this event?
So no, not for this event. The difference for that event was because of the large scale of it, you guys were acting as alcohol monitors as well. Checking IDs, they just have to be able to show that they have the ability to perform that service. The people that are gonna be monitoring will be the servers from Grove and from Airlink. And because it's such a small area, and the numbers are gonna be less, no monitors inside, it's a lot easier security position.
Okay. Official questions? If someone would like to move action please?
Yes, I'm going to recommend approval of the temporary use of an annual license and special event winery applications pending payment of all associated fees.
I have a second, motion and a second as a discussion, everybody okay?
And can I ask you to add that you are allowing them to have the alcohol as specific within the park?
Adding that, thank you.
And I, I go with that addition.
As, as shown in the staff report.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second as amended, discussion, everybody okay? Almost everybody signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed motion carries, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Get into next new business. Mr. Klein, you wanted to make a comment before we open the public hearing on the proposed Development Code. Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna make some general comments if I could, because I'm really not leading into this particular item as opposed to just general. We've been working this now for, it seems like, for a very, very long time, in fact, it's been maybe nine, ten months altogether for, for the, the marijuana conversation, I was just going back. This started back last summer with our first application for a non-dispensary. And, you know, like any application, so far that we've received, we were just proceeded to process as we thought we should process that. It quickly came to our attention that this was going to be a little different, that there was a very deal of in the interest in this particular application and the issue in general at this point. So as we got, you know, as we got up to speed, understanding what the interests and the concerns were, we came to you and talked to you about what, what a process, what we thought a process should look like. And, and I think we ended up with really kind of a three-part process, if you, I'm just going down memory lane just a little bit, I'm gonna get somewhere with this conversation. I have an endpoint mind source, and it's not written down. But we had, one, we had to process the application that was in front of us, so that was just, here's the application, here's the code, we need to work through that, that, that was subjected to the rules that were in place. And you've, you've heard that repeatedly, and you've seen that application, it's come to, it's down on appeal. But that, that is the individual application we're talking about, the Striker Road application. Separate and apart from that, we recognized that, okay, so now we need to really just talk about the bigger picture of marijuana regulation and our community. And so we've broken into two different parts. One, we've broken into what can we do that can be done, with all the issues with you that we thought were of interest to you, and we did this with an attorney that is not one of the precedent process, but what were the issues with you that we thought were of interest in terms of further regulations outside of what we already had in place. And decided that there was really a two-track process, they are separate, apart from the application. And that two-track process says, there are things that we can do right away with a code of that, that doesn't require our land use process. And that's simple to do, we came to you, and I think, and you, you got to yes on that, and we now have a business license ordinance for marijuana that encompasses a lot of the issues that you wanted. There were further issues, and we're here trying to, and we think we'll get to closure here, you know, within the next couple of meetings, you know, hopefully on where we are today. But there were other issues that required a land use process, so, so this is where we are today, this has been a process that, you know, a bit of an eye-opener for us. We've not gone through one like this, my tinker here, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that staff recalls probably one either. We have, it's been a process, it's not been without its stress, it's been a process, it's not been without its exasperation, but it's been a process that by and large, you know, I, I think we need to say thank you, and I want to say thank you to a few people. And we'll start with the audience. They've been those from the beginning, this has not always been, you know, for the faint of heart, but they've been there from the very get-go, meeting after meeting after meeting. That's not, you know, and it's been, meetings by and large have been very civil, they've been engaged, they've been, we've learned a lot, you know, I've learned a lot. You know, I think in the end, we have something that reflects, you know, you know, a will of the community, may not be what everybody wanted, typically the art compromised, nobody gets everything they wanted. But if we move from where we were, and we are in a different place today, and I think we are in a place today that has, you will be concerned as much, and I will, and I will prejudge where you end up. But thank you to the audience frankly for staying engaged and educating us. Thank you to our staff who has, who put yeoman hours into this, yeoman duty into this, and all is in good faith. They've done it, you know, I know it's always been suspect, I know we're not always the most capable to the audience, or to the public at large, always to yourselves, but I can tell you from my observations, they put in all the effort, and it was all from the heart, and they did their best jobs. They have a lot of other work to do, you talked, I just talked a little bit today on management board, about some of the things that aren't, like I thought I could begin to touch it. You've gone through a strategic planning process, you know, much of the, the rest of the, the big picture things are working, lots of day-to-day, lots of big insurance. But this was a priority, and so they dealt with it as a priority. Thank you to our claiming that, you know, the clock, you know, they lost their key person, Renata had to give up the pieces, you know, that was a challenge, I mean, there's a lot of work that was done before Renata got back on, engaged in the process. She's working awfully hard to get a private, and that's awfully tough. And thank you to Terry and the legal team, because we lost their key, you know, attorney in this process. So all in all, it's been a strange nine or 10 months for all of us, stressful 10 months. But at the end of the day, I think we've got to what you need, and so I'm just gonna turn it over from there. Thank you for taking, for listening today.
Thank you for your comments. I have a script here that I need to read on what we're gonna do today. So this evening, we have a public hearing on file number LA-01-2017, alleged legislative amendment of proposed text amendments to the Independence Development Code. The city council will make the final decision upon the legislative amendment based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. The proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedure required by the city and the state of Oregon, this is the type four legislative procedure. Beginning of the public hearing tonight, staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and/or the state of Oregon state by planning bills. For anyone wishing to speak, we'll be asking to use a sign-up sheet that is provided with interested people, will be recognizing in or, in the order in which their names are, are on the speaker's list. When you're called to speak, you must be recognized by the committee, and you must state your name and address for the public record. Given the number of people present, we ask each speaker limit themselves to no more than three minutes, and please remember that all presentations will time, you'll be informed when your time has expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked by the chair to, to conclude their remarks. If you don't finish your presentation, be sure to make, provide a copy or statement to staff, written testimony will all be offered and be considered and may be made a part of the record. In order to minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group, with other members of the organization standing still in support. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium at the request of the council to respond to a question. Now, before we get started, does any council wish to declare actual or potential conflict of interest on the matter before us tonight? Anybody have any conflicts they need to declare? Okay, there are no, so what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna open the public hearing, and then I'll, we'll go with a staff report, and then we'll have questions for staff, and after all of that, then we'll have testimony, as I outlined, you know, and if you haven't filled out a speaker card, it will be an opportunity, don't, don't worry, we're not gonna preclude you from getting a chance to talk. And after we're all done with that, we'll close the hearing, and the council will deliberate, and we'll try to come to a decision. Everybody okay? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm opening the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask that the staff make their report, and would you care to, do I need to be there?
Can I, if I can?
That's, is that okay over there, Blake? You're good, just make sure the microphone is close enough to you so everybody can hear.
Thank you, Mayor, how was that?
Is everybody in the back here okay?
No.
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 You have to move it really close. You have to move it really close to you, Renata.
Okay, how's this?
Better?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. As was stated, this is legislative amendment 01-2017. You have three exhibits in your staff report. Exhibit A is draft amendments to your development code. Exhibit B are maps that include 1.1 and 3.2. These are for visual purposes of two discussions the planning commission had about potential buffers. Those were included in front of you by Karen. Exhibit three is our sample site plan showing proposed amendments for buffering, screening, and setbacks for the light industrial zone and the heavy industrial zone. And I'm going to look to Karen right now how we've received written comments in advance of this public hearing.
We just have received, we just, I've received some this evening, and I believe the person will speak using the same script.
Okay, then they can present copies. Thank you, I. So, no other grant testimony has been received by myself or the city. The request is a legislative amendment to your development code. This would update your development code moving forward if it's adopted, if and when adopted for these changes. I would note that this has nothing to do with current land use applications that have been reviewed or could be potentially submitted in advance of your amendment of the development code. So this is a legislative amendment that upon adoption would take effect in front of the city, and that takes two readings of the ordinance. Correct? Okay. I would also ask that the city council and the public refrain from discussing any pending appeals or land use applications that may have come before the city council, because this is a legislative amendment to your development code, and once adopted, it would move you forward. The background on this, generally speaking, is to establish land use regulations for recreational and medical marijuana facilities. I will, as part of my staff report, get into further detail of what those changes are. It was requested by a member of the public, and also I believe the city council noted that it would be helpful to have bullets of what those changes are. So, in front of you tonight, you have a bulleted summary of those changes, and I will summarize those with you. But I would remind you that under exhibit E, exhibit A, excuse me, is what the proposed language is drafted at this point. We are also asking for guidance from you, the city council, based on the planning commission recommendation for potential additional buffering. But the, on advice of your legal counsel, it was to get a recommendation from the planning commission, to hear from the city council what that policy guidance was, and then your legal counsel will draft that language to be inserted into the development code. Summarizing that correctly? Okay, so there is some language, if you are adopting additional buffers, that you have correctly noted is not within exhibit A at this point. But the staff is looking for guidance on what additional types of buffering or regulations you may make a decision on. Okay? Okay, thank you. So I'm moving on to page two of the staff report. Generally, legislative amendments, and in particular in the Independence Development Code do not-
Can I ask a question? So, that's page two of the staff report. That's page 32 of the total packet, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, when we talk about legislative amendments, and in particular, your development code talks about how to process a legislative amendment, there is not approval criteria for text amendments to the development code, but there are procedural requirements, and those are summarized in findings two through four. Both staff and the planning commission, I'm sorry, it calls for the planning commission to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council. The planning commission held their public hearing on April 3rd. They closed the public hearing, and they requested some additional information from staff as part of their deliberations. The planning commission met to continue their deliberations at a meeting on May 1st, at which point they made a recommendation to the city council. That recommendation has been summarized and by Karen, and is placed on a piece of paper for you tonight. Again, we'll have some discussion about what that recommendation was, but Karen has typed up that motion, so that you're very clear about the planning commission's recommendation was to you. In addition, notice of the planning commission city council hearings was published in the INOIS of Service and provided to the Department of Land Conservation and Development as required by state statute. Generally, actually, I'm not going to say generally, but the staff and the planning commission reviewed the Independence Conference of Plan policies and have concluded that the proposed amendments as drafted are consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the Independence Conference of Plan, and those statewide planning goals and the Conference of Plan goals are summarized on pages three through seven of your staff report. That's pages 33, 34, 35, 36, and the top of 37. I'm not going to go through those unless you'd like me to, but they're summarized in your report, and both staff and the planning commission is finding that these proposed amendments comply with those requirements. So now I'm on page 37 of the packet. Upon the closing of the planning commission hearing and planning commission deliberation, they found that the proposed amendments are consistent with statewide planning goals. So, under summary proposed amendments, you also have in front of you a revised page seven of the staff report, page 37. It was noted that item three, as summarized by staff, was not as clear as it should be, and I fully agree, after the planning commission meeting and direction, we have a quick turnaround to get the packets. So I apologize if there's been any confusion. I have attempted to provide for you greater clarity on number three of what I intended. So, really, the planning commission's recommendation was to place a prohibition around industrially-zoned properties that are within 250 feet of residentially-zoned properties and exclude them from marijuana-related permissible uses. We can have some discussion, because it's somewhat difficult for me to explain the way that this language, but basically the planning commission, and we have their motion in front of you. If the proposed additional uses that are proposed to be added to the industrial zones regarding marijuana, if you are within 250 feet of a residentially-zoned property, you would not be permitted to have those additional permitted uses that we're adding. But if you're 400 feet or 300 feet from any residential zone, then those permitted uses that were proposed to be added under light industrial, heavy industrial, you would be permitted to have those marijuana uses. You have the language in front of you, and we can have some discussion, and eventually I'll have Karen pull up some maps for visuals, but you have those packs in front of you. So, with that said, you have the draft development code, including some changes. I can go through my pointed summary with you all and answer some questions. And then staff is looking for direction from you on additional buffering, if you would like to decide upon that based on what the planning commission has recommended to you. So I will summarize some of the proposed amendments under exhibit A, generally speaking. First, subsection 13 is your definitions section. So under definitions, the proposal is to add new definitions regarding various marijuana facilities and uses. These reflect the state's legalization of medical, recreational marijuana uses, and we're using the language from the Oregon revised statutes, because we don't want to conflict with those definitions. So we're taking definitions from state land use or regulations, we're adding them to subsection 13. By defining them in your code, you're saying that we can then, in other sections of the code, say where this is allowed and where it's not allowed. So first, you define it, and then in your zones, you say what is allowed and what is not. That's what the remainder of exhibit A is. So, except for medical marijuana grow sites, all permitted marijuana uses are subject to what is called an additional special permitted use. And you're going to see that in every section of the code where we're adding a marijuana use, we're calling it a special permitted use. And the city is subjecting these marijuana uses to additional requirements such as buffering and distance and other licensing requirements that wouldn't apply to, for example, other permitted uses that are currently in your commercial, mixed-use commercial zones, your industrial zones. So, you're saying that while they're allowed in these zones, we're adding additional standards to jest these ones that we're adding. So, I'm going to give an example here. In the mixed-use commercial zone, the proposal is to add a medical marijuana dispensary as a permitted use, but it's added as a special, excuse me, special use limitation is the terminology. The special use limitation does not allow a medical marijuana dispensary to be within 1,000 feet of a school, for example. It also doesn't allow it in a downtown overlay zone. So what you're doing is you're adding a medical marijuana dispensary as a permitted use in the MUPC zone, but you're saying there's also additional standards. Can't be in the downtown overlay, can't be within 1,000 feet of schools. So that's what we're calling, and I want to, special use limitations for these added uses. Okay. So, the planning commission, after April hearing, and in their packets, had an exhibit A and exhibit B. Exhibit A had this proposed special use limitation, as you have as exhibit A tonight. That was their recommendation. They also had an exhibit B, which proposed these uses that are being added as a conditional use, which requires a conditional buffer review. The planning commission's recommendation was for the use of the special use limitation and not for them to be handled conditionally. A proposed marijuana special use limitation would not subject these special use limitations to conditional use approval procedures that would go before a planning commission, but depending upon the scale of the development, it could potentially be subject to a site developer review. That's, your code already has standards on when permitted uses in the zone are required to go through site developer review. So we are asking for additional guidance from you tonight. You have the motion from the planning commission in writing in front of you. And I guess that is the conclusion of my staff report, and I'm here with legal counsel and your staff that's been involved to try to answer questions if you have before you open the public hearing. But also note, on page eight of this staff report, which is page 38 of the packet, you have sample motions if and when you are ready to make a decision. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Their staff report.
I have a question.
Please do, counselor.
I think I understand the 200, let's go with 250-foot buffer, but I just want to make sure I'm correct. So I own this piece of property. I'm going to try to go on an east-west line here, just so we have a linear scale. So along the east-west line, there's a residential property. We're going to have that at zero feet, and then-
From the property line.
Yeah. We're going to start there, and then we're going to go towards the property that the marijuana site's going to be on. So, I go 150 feet, and now I'm on my property. I can't, I can't put the marijuana there, right? If I have a 250-foot buffer.
The property line from the residential zone to-
The closest part of my property.
To the proposed use on an industrial or commercial zone-
Right.
Would have to be 250 feet, not the struc-, as the language is currently drafted, not the structure where that use would be on the property, but it, and I can find the text in the document.
So I couldn't, now I'm at 260 feet away, my property is 200, and the closest part of my property is 260 feet away. I'm okay then, I can get the special use.
If you were the applicant for a, yes, 260.
So if any part of my property is within that 250-foot boundary, the whole property cannot be used for marijuana, unless for some reason it can be subdivided or whatever.
Yeah, and you have in front of you what are called, there's two map 3.2s. One of those maps shows, and I'm not the mapmaker here, someone else in our staff has created these, but it has a purple line, and it shows the 250-foot boundary that she put around all residential zones. She then took the map, and any property that was touched within that 250-foot residential buffer, she said was not permitted. It was within that property line. So even if it's, you know, two feet of that property, it's then removed. And so what you have, and the easiest, if you look at, as you come into town 51, where you have the industrial zones, and the salmon colors, that's where uses could be permitted. So I hope that-
Okay, now you explained it, I just wanted to make sure to the audience understood that. It's kind of important.
Yes.
Go ahead. I have a question. The map that includes the purple line buffers, there's a significant portion between the highway and the railroad track that aren't shaped permitting use there, was that just-
It's an error. We have worked with these maps. And so, I would say that while the one with the purple line shows you that 250-foot buffer, it is the one without the purple line, 3.2, that will show in salmon color where use would be permitted. But alternatively, you know, if you look at Monwood Street, and there's MUPC zones, so this is commercial zones, you've got salmon colors on Monwood Street. As you move eastward to the downtown core, in what's called the downtown overlay zone, there's also MUPC properties that are in with that downtown overlay and outside the other buffers. But the downtown overlay, we're saying those uses cannot occur in the downtown overlay. So that's kind of another layer where it's not permitted in there, as the current text is drafted.
And so, if I may, so to make sure I'm clear, because I have a plethora of maps, more maps than I want to, so this map that I've got here in my hand, okay? So the only places that marijuana, folks, that you can have marijuana facilities are these salmon ones over here, is that correct?
Those are industrially-zoned parcels. So only those uses that we're adding in as a permitted use, and then as recommended by the planning commission, you would additionally have to be 250 feet away from property line to property line.
I just want to make sure I was reading the right map.
Yes, 3.2, and it has the salmon color and the industrial. I do want to note that we have tried, and it was, you know, we've had several iterations at workshops and with the planning commission to try and give a visualization that will help you all and the planning commission understand the scale of what the impacts are. These maps will not be adopted and will not be what is used to determine. It will be the text of your development.
Right. Understood. I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
I guess I'm still quite clear here. So, the one purple, which I just saw tonight, that showed the 250-foot boundary.
But that were around residential zones.
Okay, so these salmon-colored ones that are near residential are not industrial?
What you're seeing is salmon-colored is not within, it's two things. It's industrially-zoned, because we're not, planning commission has not recommended the same standards for commercial permitted uses. So there's two criteria for you to see something in salmon on this map. It has to be either light or heavy industrial, and it has to be more than 250 feet away from the property line of a residential property in order to be shown as salmon on this map.
So, for example, the ones on Monwood Street are shown as permitted uses?
Because they are commercial.
Because they're commercial, okay.
The discussion from the planning commission was industrial-only. The discussion from the planning commission was industrial only as having that distance requirement from residential zones, not for commercial properties to have that.
So the one that does not have the purple line, that would be permitted uses on industrial...
Industrialized.
Yeah. I'm looking at these ones on Highway 51 that are salmon. Under the 250-foot rules, exclusion rule, are they permitted uses?
So you're adding, under Exhibit A, you are listing what would be permitted in an industrial zone, and that is listed out in Exhibit B, and you're seeing what that text says. What you're not seeing in the text, well, what has been recommended by the planning commission, is if it's permitted in the industrial zones, but it is within 250 feet of a residential property, then it would have a buffer, I guess is the, it would, would not be allowed. Working with our map, and this map is not perfect, and I can tell you that I sat down with her the day after the planning commission direction, and someone who does this all day, and her language was, we have to reverse engineer it, because it's not just like creating a buffer, because we were talking about only industrial, I don't want it, it is imperfect, but the intent and the motion you have in front of you is written in text from the planning commission, so hopefully that helps.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to see is the, I mean, there's a significant difference in the amount of property that would be permitted. The one that doesn't have the purple shows all the properties that would, were special use.
Map 1.1 would be no buffer.
Yeah, I don't care about 1.1.
Okay.
The two 3.2s we've got here.
Right.
But you get a sense of the scale of the significant reduction from 1.1.
Okay, but I don't care about 1.1. Between 2.32 and 3.2 was...
The one with the purple line and the one without. Yeah, in reality, in the text, they're the same graphically, but they're not.
Okay, the text, they're the same. So permitted uses on one map and permitted uses on the other map are the same, are the same number of properties would be permitted uses. We just can't graphically show it. They're demonstrating two different things. It's kind of the crux of the whole argument here.
So what's being demonstrated with the purple is a 250-foot buffer?
Right.
So if you see any industrial properties that touch that buffer, she created that first. Then she created the other map and started to salmon color which industrially zoned properties could have this type of use.
So, okay, I would like to see the other.
Yeah, if you look at Monwood Street, if we scroll down.
Let's forget about, let's forget about Monwood Street. Let's look at Highway 51.
Okay.
So all these properties right here, under both scenarios, those are, under both maps, they're permitted uses. I'll see what's under my head.
I think, I think what you're asking is, are the, are the number of lots on which you could have a marijuana facility the same from map to map? And the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's trying to be clear today. Okay.
And in the interest of clarity, I went through and listened to the planning commission meeting a couple of times on the audio tape with a focus on the, on the motion that was made at the end of the meeting that addresses this 250-foot buffer. And my notes that I took twice on those, that particular motion did not include the word prohibit. Has that been something added in for legal clarity? It was, I think it was to make that element per, sorry.
So when Renata wrote the staff report, she completely admits she just added in something that wasn't there. She wrote it wrong, which is so understandable considering that she left a planning commission meeting, did this work, and turned it around the very next day. So there were some mistakes in it. So her prohibit language tonight that you're seeing in that red strikeout is simply, is the simplest way she could try to paraphrase what the planning commission said. What Karen provided to you is the actual motion, which is why Karen provided that to you.
And that is, which one is that on, Karen?
What?
The national motion.
Oh, that is what was provided to you with the mask tonight. There it is.
There's that.
Yes, let's, that is exactly what I'm saying. So if we make the decision tonight or accept the recommendation of the planning commission, can we use the terminology that matches up with their motion?
My recommendation would not be to reflect, if you actually want to do what the planning commission wanted, that was their best effort at directing staff on what they were interested in, but it is not a very clear description of what they actually wanted.
So the wording that includes the word prohibition is a better description of that?
Yes.
Sorry.
Let me, I'm waiting for, did you get the question?
Yeah.
How would you...
So actually, what I, I think that if you wanted to adopt the planning commission's recommendation, I would look at Renata's page eight, your page 38, number one. That gives us really clear direction. We want to do what the planning commission intended, and it lets me give you the continues that does that.
And also, I'm looking at a copy of an email that I received, and I know that Karen sent to the entire council, and Renata talks about four variations on language. Says, "It was my understanding that we should not present four various language scenarios as this would be at a high cost and may in itself cause some confusion." So again, I'm asking the recommended, recommended motion on the page 38 of 139, which is eight of eight of the packet, that would satisfy the desires of the planning commission in their motion and be legally more accurate?
So let's be super clear. We don't have any recommended motions, because this is legislative action. You guys get to be the policy decision makers. But yes, if you wanted to direct us to draft code language along the lines of what the planning commission wanted to see, that would be option one. And then, just to directly address your question, Counselor Morton, of the four different variants of code language, that was, Renata was acting, and staff was acting completely at my direction, saying, "I don't want to have to mess with the code and give you multiple options of what you may or may not even want. You might want 100-foot buffers, you might want 200 buffers, you might want the 250-foot buffers, you might want 500 foot buffers," depending on, and what I'm looking for is to see what you think is reasonable.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Hicks, do you have a question?
Hi. Just another clarification of a map. I'm just assuming we don't have a way to enforce any of the buffers that extend past the city.
You are so smart. That is exactly, I was thinking of that today, and you're, you're correct. And it, it was just a map convenience.
Official questions for staff? Is everybody clear?
I might have another question.
Please do.
Kind of on a different subject. It's about the homegrown medical marijuana. Now, in the definition of marijuana facility, we left out the medical marijuana grow site, which I assume is because, I had this discussion before, that it's actually, because it's state statute, it's a very small, limited grow site, so it wouldn't be expanded to something that was bigger, that would perhaps, do you remember, I can't remember with you which lawyer we're talking about.
It was definitely not with me, but in the planning commission discussion, that did come up. And while you could regulate, I think you're talking about medical homegrow?
Yes.
It was determined, it was a policy determination that the enforcement time, money, and effectiveness wouldn't merit regulations beyond what the state already has.
And my understanding was that the definition of the way, or the way the state regulates it, they could not really have large grows.
That is my understanding too.
Okay.
Let me tell you, I am parroting Lauren right now. I went home and emailed her and tried to find out what was the priority discussion, so.
So this is maybe a little bit different question, but so what happens if the state decides to change the law? How are we protected? Wouldn't they say suddenly you can, you can put, you've got a half acre lot, you can put a greenhouse there?
They are not going to make sudden changes in this area. It will, it will happen exactly how this happened, which gave you the opportunity to think.
Will we have time to respond?
I would anticipate so. I mean, we have had a lot of time already, and so you should definitely be able to respond. I would add that, like the process that you're going through right now, you can amend your development code. It takes time, at any time by council direction. So if you see a state law change and you say, "Oh, we want to make a change to our development code," then you notice a public...
Process, we just went through.
...this process. So if there was to be a...
So another six months, and then somebody puts an application in, and we're stuck?
So go, remember, there, so the legislature will act. We will tell you what they changed. That law will go into effect, you know, usually at earliest six months thereafter, which should be enough time to go through a land use process under your code.
Additional questions for staff at this moment? Okay, what we are gonna do now is we will go, let me get my script here, so I can make sure I'm doing this exactly right. Yeah, I've got a plethora of papers this morning. I'm calling it morning. Okay, you know, it's not that late.
It's been or not lasting?
No, we're not gonna last that long. Okay, public testimony. First person I have is Melinda Short. Would like to make a comment to the... Good evening. We're getting your position. Yeah, this is your written testimony.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
In the interest of time, I'm just gonna read a little bit of the...
Thank you, appreciate that.
My name is Melinda Short, I'm 606 Skyraider Drive, Independence. And the citizens' negative reaction to the current application on this right here and how the city staff handled the process should be an indication of how necessary this residential buffer is. If you protect the schools, the library, and parks with buffer zones, why would you not do the same for schools? If the zones are to protect children, why would you not protect them in their homes? Independence voted to decriminalize marijuana, not to allow the city to put multiple unregulated source of grow operations across the street or adjacent to our homes. A residential buffer zone is not handed handed or to restricted to common sense. The city's support of the plan zoning is not our fault, but staff has made it our problem. Any hard fought regulatory conditions we were able to place on the current facility will not apply to the next, or the next, or the next, and there will always be a fight. The planning commission recognized the inherent incompatibility of having heavy industrial building next to residential and tried to relieve it by adding this buffer zone. We ask that you approve the residential buffer zone as made on the audio record from the planning commission meeting and make a simple and concise buffer zone like those around parks, libraries, and schools for essential properties within 250 feet of heavy or light industrially zoned properties that will exclude all marijuana-related uses permitted or conditional on those industrial properties.
Thank you, appreciate that. Are there other, are there other people who'd wish to speak to this? Without, if you'd like to, this is your opportunity. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, and staff. My name is Arvita Teal, and I'm at 715 Skyraider, Independence, Oregon. I was wondering why we just don't take the agricultural part out of that, out of the zoning. What's confusing, a lot of people, heavy industrial also includes light industrial, and when you look up light industrial, it includes agriculture. I was wondering why we have to include agricultural in light industrial and light industrial in heavy industrial. If we just changed the wording of all that coding, we would eliminate a lot of our problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Does staff have any comment to the question that was raised? There any?
Don't think we've put any analysis on that at all. Is anybody, no. So if you'd like us to come back on the question?
I don't know, let's see where, let's see where discussion. Last call for anybody else. Without objection, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we're going to go with deliberation, and let's make a decision. What are people thinking? I, I'll start. I like, I like what the planning commission did. I think a 250-foot buffer makes sense. You know, when we started this, I raised some concerns, yes, I wanted to ask the questions about what the implications were. But as we just mentioned, the time I really was looking forward to the planning commission process, to going through the whole process, which I think was helpful. At least it was helpful to me. So I like the 250-foot. I think it makes reasonable sense. So if others would like to share their opinions, thoughts, discussions?
I agree with you 100%, and I'm very pleased to see that in here. The reason I asked so many questions was because I wanted to make sure that the language that's written into the documents that we received fully conveys the sense of needing and having that 250-foot buffer.
Additional comments or thoughts?
Well, I do have additional thought. The last lady that spoke, Ardi, what she said is the same thing that I said a couple months ago about how we actually said that heavy industry and the agricultural part was a Skrivner error, okay? And now we're, so it seems like what she said makes a lot of sense to me. It's kind of like in one fell swoop, we can eliminate greenhouseism, out of industrial, having said that, we're down the road. I think the 250 is a great idea. I think we can live with 100, I think 250 is fine. But I want to make sure everybody on the council understands the liability level that we're doing this, because that was one of the reasons we didn't see it before, was there was the staff and other people were concerned about liability. So as far as what's a reasonable number of marijuana sites, so we have to take that into consideration. I think it's fine. I think it's, that's okay. But I want to make sure everybody's thinking about that when we go.
If you, if I could, because I was the person, one of the people who raised that. And my thought, as I was thinking about this, is because I wanted to make sure we didn't get into that situation where we had, where the rules are written so that we were at risk because there was no place.
Right.
But so by previous actions, we've now said there are place. And so there, that argument, at least in my mind, no longer fits, and I don't, and I don't think we're at risk, because, because as time has happened, that was my, my thinking.
I'd make a comment to former counselor, Counselor Peck, he was going through this. He asked a question, which I thought was very suitable. How many, you know, marijuana businesses do we need in town? What is a reasonable amount? And I think, looking at the property we have here, I think we have plenty to say we have a reasonable opportunity for that type of business to be in town without having too many.
And economics will balance.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the same thing.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the same thing. How many are we going to be having? And why are they choosing Independence? That's my concern. Because, you know, we are kind of small and pretty grown, and it worries me because of the teenagers. And I don't know, I think that we should have unlimited, uh, having, uh, marijuana.
We're not going to be exiled here.
I mean, the sites.
Right. Other councillors have wished to make comment?
Yeah. I'd just like to share, I was formerly on the planning commission and helped with this, and now certainly is on having the opportunity to watch them continue to deal with it. And I know that a lot of time, effort, and emotion, the passion that are down, that is rolling onto this process. I'm quite impressed with actually what they brought forward to us, to come up with something satisfactory.
One other question? Please do.
I guess I'm going to address this to somebody over here. So, how do we control, and I think that's the other word, control, future processing, grow plants and processing plants to ensure a minimum of at least what the one on Striker has for noise and odor? Can we do that, or are we limiting ourselves by?
I think you were prepping that question.
I'm also able to chime in, but go ahead.
Right now, the council has adopted marijuana business license, so that has required us for odor. And if you were wanting to add additional development code changes, you would direct us to do that.
Okay.
Right now, if someone came in, they would go through site design review. If they came in with a grow operation, I would apply the same standard that we just put on the last one.
But do we have to have that in writing before they come in so that we can do that? Like, if they came in and they got going to do a spray, bubble gum spray type thing or whatever it was, the same person wanted first, would we say, do we have anything to say, "No, that isn't going to work," or?
No, we don't.
So, that's something, we need to initiate?
Yeah, so if you wanted to get that detailed in your criteria, you could.
That's really a different kind of regulatory requirement than what your normal land use criteria sets out. Your land use criteria could be refined a little bit, but I would, generally the record dictates, are you meeting an odor standard that is set in your code? And then the record shows, is the application, is the applicant submitting something that satisfies you as the decision maker, that, or the planning commission or staff, that this odor standard is going to be met? So, it doesn't actually have to define, you need to use this brand of something?
The applicant would know ahead of time, hey, this didn't fly before. It's not going to have to be like this.
Right, and just to kind of, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think that answers Art's question a little bit anyway.
And so, I know that this has been repeated many times to you, but there's, so there's the state regulatory standards, they have to have their state license, whether it's OLCC or, and it's, we're a health authority, OHA. You have your business license ordinance, which just to kind of review, the submittals that they provide to you have to show that they're going to label their product a certain way, they're going to have a certain kind of floor plan, they have certain odor control and ventilation requirements, exterior light shielding. They are obligated to update their information to you if it ever, if their operation ever changes, and you have inspection rights. And then if they don't need any of those, so they have to submit all that stuff to you, if they don't need your requirements, you won't issue the license.
I understand, I just don't want to go through this again if there's another one that comes on that.
I agree.
We ought to set a minimum here, then they can exceed it.
And then there was the site design requirements, and you also have your license ordinance. So, I'm just kind of telling you all of the different regulatory schemes that are governing whatever operations are going to come in.
Now that we have these tools in place?
Well, this is really a zoning. What you're doing tonight is you're telling them where they can locate. We're not telling them how they can locate. What you've done previously tells them how they can locate and how to operate.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, let me ask a question. Are we okay? Okay. So, if we want to take action here, can somebody talk to me about timelines here? Is it, if we approve a motion here with direction, can talk, talk me through what, what happens next, what that timeline is, so that we know what to do?
So, David and I discussed this earlier today. There's one little tweak that I can make to it now, because of the comments and the response that I'm hearing from the council. So, we anticipate that you will ask me to add the 250-foot buffer to the residential properties affecting industrial zone properties. I will do that code language, I can bring it back to you in this legislative strikeout format that Karen so beautifully prepared for clarity. And you can look at that at the next meeting, you can decide if you like it or if you want changes, if it doesn't look like what you thought your intent was. And we can have an adopted ordinance available at that meeting if you believe that the language I provide to you affects your intent. Or, we could just bring the code language back to you, you could have the discussion, you can then direct me further, and we can bring the ordinance back at the following meeting. So, we could either go, we could either finish up end of May, or it could extend into the first meeting in June.
Personally, I like option one. I'd like to get this going and done with.
I think that's what everybody's, is there anything disagree with that? Okay, so, in anticipation of passing the motion, then, and I think we can make, we can make this work, because I'm going to guess that we're not going to get into my wordsmithing here, because that's what you do.
Oh, I appreciate that.
I was being complimentary.
I appreciate that.
Does that sound right? So, for clarity, so the record, if to do what we wanted to do, what you've heard the discussion in the 250 buffers, using the number one on page 38, option number one, is that the, is that the motion that we need to make to move this forward the way we've been discussing tonight?
Absolutely.
Is that correct? Is everybody okay with that? If someone would take that action?
Mayor, I can't miss this, but I'm not, did you close the hearing?
That's what I was just going to ask.
Yes.
I did, so.
I know 2:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
If everybody's okay, if someone would move, is that what you wanted to do? I hit, that's number one here. Yeah, please.
I noticed that there's a by missing, so it was recommended by the planning commission at the very end of that first top line.
Yes. Okay. I move to approve legislation amendments from LA-01, 2017, as recommended by the planning commission, to adopt the proposed text of Exhibit A, as recommended by the planning commission, and as outlined in the summary of proposed amendments, 1 through 3 above, including buffers identified in map 3.2.
I second that.
Okay, I second. Is there a discussion?
Yes, I want to make sure that it has, that the map 3.2 that we're using is the one with the purple lines.
No, no, they're, they're, they're different versions of the same thing. I'm correct. Okay. Clarification. That's correct. Is everybody okay with this? Are you all right? Okay. All if they're signed by the saying aye. Opposed, or carries? Thank you. You can apply, that's okay. Counsel, would you mind if we did a five-minute break? I know we have a couple of things, and then we have an additional executive session. Would you do five minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, counsel, for moving forward on this. I think it does prove that process does work. I'm trying to drive us nuts, but we're getting there. The next item on our agenda, a couple of council members, Kevin mentioned that we should consider taking a look at when we meet. The meeting times, as I understand, we're legally required to meet once a month. And as I understand, from 30, 40 years ago, they had, they started early, the early meeting at 7:30 A.M., because some people couldn't come to evening meetings. And then there was the opportunity for somebody to come early for evening. We have tried, now it hasn't always worked out perfectly, but we've tried to put at least the big public hearings, big, big stuff in the evening, you know, so that, and also in the morning, that, you know, some people do have to go to work, so there are some issues. So, councillor Dave brought up that he'd like to discuss when we should have our meetings. And so, I put that on the agenda because I know a couple of people that would want to talk about it, so we can talk about it. Please do.
I did an informal survey in my area that I live down the airport, and was 100% wanted to have it in the evening. It weren't wild about 7:30, they thought it should be earlier, but it just, you know, they're retired, they're jarring, not all. So, that may have something to do with it. But I, I noticed that law has them all as in the evening. I think that's the standard. I think we're, we're missing out on having more people who might not have it in the evening. And I would, that's kind of where I would suggest we go.
Well, certainly, I mean, over the years, we've seen the evening meetings are much better attended than the, very rarely have visitors in the morning. And for myself, I'd love to have an evening, so I don't have to take time off from work. I know bigger cities have me in during the daytime, you know, Salem had, I think Salem had, do they have theirs? No, they're in the evening now, but sometimes they've been in the morning, not morning, lunchtime. I mean, they're all, cities are all over the world. So, but for you, you had mentioned that it might make your life easier. Yeah, I did want to hear a comment from staff, how that would affect them, better, worse, about the same.
It really doesn't make, I don't think it matters on staff, than looking over at Karen whose eyes are open, big and wide. We have that conversation, but frankly, you know, this is your meeting, it's only twice a month anyway, so.
Only if that's more convenient, to the extent that it's more convenient for you, that's fine, we're here to support you. It is the more, I can begin used to, I have to say, but. Diana, what would you like to do?
Well, mornings are kind of hard for me.
Okay.
Because I have to, because I'm still working.
Right.
And it's really hard, because I have to go and open the church and turn off the alarms and everything, and A.F.D.
So, evening would be better for you?
I think so.
Okay. And?
It would be nice enough to actually have to take vacation hours to attend.
Yes, there is.
There is one good reason for a morning meeting, and that our city attorney frequently has nighttime conflicts for the very same reason other councils that do mostly night meetings. So, the morning meeting is a unique opportunity for a regular attending council, and it's as needed for us.
I don't come to that many, so I didn't really want to pipe up, but it, but it is the way that David can make sure I can get here.
Okay.
Second meeting of the month.
I mean, we can always change the evening, if it has to be in the morning, I mean, we can change it, just for that meeting.
And I also don't want to lose the high school meeting.
Right, we've still, and I think, I don't think anybody, I think we should keep doing the high school because...
Maybe too.
Yeah, whatever we need to do, and we'll talk to them about it early in the year too. Marilyn, what would your preference?
In the interest of being honorary, I love the morning meetings.
Mike?
I really have no preference. Biologically, I work better than meetings.
So, what I'm hearing is that there'd be more, I love mornings too, because it helps get me, I'm better. I need all the better I can get. So, let's try to go to an evening. I like some of the suggestion that, to try to be a sensitive staff, now, city manager is always saying that, you know, it's our meeting, and I get that. But I also recognize they also have additional other kinds of things. What I'd like to suggest is that we could do it a little earlier, get started earlier, because of Tom, because I know you work nights.
You might.
Well, not nights, but really, it's still night when you have to go.
It's mornings, it is mornings.
Right. And we could do it a little earlier in the evening, and then maybe like at 6:30, so that, because you get off at 6:00.
Yes.
Right, and we did it at 6:30, that would help move along. We've had probably longer meetings for new council, we've had probably more longer meetings than I've had in years and years and years and years. And I think staff probably agrees, yeah, they're going, yeah.
But it took that effect.
Yeah, and, you know, speed is not all that it is. So, let's see if we can make some changes here. It's going to take a little, I have to juggle some calendars a little bit. Does staff have significant calendars to juggle?
Couldn't I, I know when you were saying making a little earlier, I hope you were referring to both meetings. Consistency is something.
Yes, yeah, consistency would be, is that, so is it, like, we're going to stay with Tuesdays, 6:30, let's try, let's try to move to 6:30.
In the morning?
Yes. Evening, evening. I will tell you, there are more than a few legislative meetings at 6:30, and they do legislative work early. So, we're going to try to go to 6:30, Tuesdays, P.M.s. Let me work with staff and see, and try to help make this happen. Is this the beginning of May? I don't know if we'll be able to do it. I'm not committing to the beginning of June, I mean, the beginning of...
Beginning of May.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You see what I mean? Okay?
Just draw it from the hat.
And because we are going to try to be consistent, because I think it makes life easier, and at least a 6:30 means an hour earlier than, with the whole goal of not, we're not going to try to, try to be efficient. Yes, sir.
We just, and I'm finding we're going in that direction, we probably need to glean your rules, the code, the charter, and anything else that may have...
Right, and that's why...
Certainly, our website may hopefully has a lot of reference.
Right, and so, I'm going to guess it's going to take us a little while, but we'll move that direction unless there's objection. So, you'll let us know about the next meeting?
About the June meeting.
So, about the May meeting?
Oh, the May will probably still be a morning.
We're going to keep, we're going to keep May until 30th morning? Is it? It's up to staff. I don't know how long it's going to take.
Sounds like the June meeting.
Yeah, it's a process.
To make me around for it, to see if it's a lot...
We'll let you know. We'll have to be some hearings. We'll let you know. I'm going to try to keep moving as promptly for a few moments, because we have some more matters to deal with. Yes, sir.
One last thing. We probably need to stay with 7:30 next time, it is in the code, and we'll read you the code line, and we'll bring you a code, an ordinance to amend the code.
It's in the code?
It is in the code.
Wow.
7:30 A.M. and P.M.
Okay, that was true. Okay. We know where you want to go, we'll make it happen when we can get there. Sound good?
So, I can give my...
All right. So, next thing, we have council announcements. Anybody have brief announcements? I hear no brief announcements, so let me get to my document. I have more words to read here. Karen, I have more paper than I have... Hold on, because I have, I have an executive, I have, where's my executive session? Because I have a second one, because I have to read the rights part. There it is. Independence City Council will now meet, will now meet in executive session under the purpose of reviewing records from the city attorney. Executive session, or is held pursuant to O.R.S. 1926602F regarding exempt public records. Representatives of the news media, designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session of representatives of news media specifically directed not to record any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. Decisions made in executive session are just not the council attorney's conference room for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session is adjourned, will return to open session in the council chambers. Just to let folks know, I don't anticipate taking any substantive action at the end of the meeting, so you don't have to watch us go bang or hit our gavel. So, yeah, you don't do this, right? So, we're going to executive session. Do you have a motion for me, please?
So, a motion could be to approve the common interest and confidentiality agreement.
If someone would still move?
Still move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all if they're signed by by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, motion carries. Now, do I go into my script?
Diana, to sign it, don't you?
What do you have next step?
To sign it, did you do that?
So, we now do signatures, and then I do my, okay.
I thought you, I gave it to you. Oh, you did. Oh, you did.
Okay, so I have to sign something here. Okay?
Uh, no, because we're still in open session and so we're...
Thank you. Okay. So, all right. The Independence City Council will now meet an executive session on the purpose of reviewing records from the city attorney. Carries this correct?
Yes.
Okay, you. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192602F regarding exempt public records. Representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. This time, uh, the council will stay in this room for the executive session. Once the execution, executive session is adjourned, we'll come back to open session. We're now in executive session. Now adjourning the executive session. Somebody would like to adjourn the meeting? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening.